Okay, I would like to call the planning commission meeting together for Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, and the pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Bedris.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Lindman.
Here.
Doeman.
Yeah.
Snyder.
Thorne.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Thank you.
I'll move, excuse Paul Snyder, let us know he's out of the country, so I'll second.
Okay, motion by Lindman, second by Thorne, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and I'd like to hear approval, the motion to approval, for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Thorne, second by Clark, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and one more motion for the minutes.
Motion?
See if you can answer anything.
Yeah.
All second?
Okay, motion by Thorne, second by Lindman, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, we have no public hearing or correspondence, so we don't need to call to the public. That brings us to item nine, new business, special land use request, behavior for all. You should have two pieces in your packet about that, one that came, I think, today or yesterday, it's updated information, and then the original one that was in the packet.
Yeah, one question I had about the Carla Wortman packet, it mentions in here the need for a public hearing, and we had one last month, and we approved the language for our ordinance provision, that went to council, and I understand was approved, so I'm not sure what the need for another public hearing is.
It's for the special land use.
For the land use itself?
Yeah, so the previous one was for the ordinance.
For the ordinance.
You're right, and now you need, the special land use also requires a public hearing.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
So, I think that excellent job was done on this, it's so detailed, and, you know, when kids are involved, of course, you gotta cross the Ts and dot the Is, dot the Is, and I believe that was done. I couldn't find any problems with it at all, personally, but I'm not an expert in that, but Sally is. Would you like to speak about that at all, Sally, about what was done?
Well, I think the review itself kinda goes over the actual proposed use and all the details of it, and the applicant has replied to a lot of our questions. So, the one thing I would like to speak about is just the process, and then you may want to have the applicant come up and review her responses to our questions. And then, so, tonight, the only thing you can do is to set the public hearing, so you cannot make any decisions tonight because the ordinance has not yet been adopted. So, until that ordinance is adopted, you can't make a decision based on the ordinance. So, the city council is going to be, excuse me, the village council is going to be having their second reading on June 11th, correct, Tabitha? And I'm assuming they advanced it to the second reading? Yes, okay, so, only until the ordinance is effective can you make a decision about the actual childcare facility.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, we can't make a decision on site plan pending ordinance approval?
You can't make a decision on the special land use or the site plan.
Or the site, okay.
Right.
Okay. Yes, please go ahead, just state your name.
My name's Laura Placy, I'm here on behalf of Feeder for All. One of the barriers to moving forward in this process was a time when we didn't have enough zoning board personnel to get quorum, and through that process, I spoke to the city administrator, and he said that we might be able to do both on the 11th. Was that not the correct information, or is this something different?
Well, I don't believe village council and the planning commission meets on, so we have to have the public hearing at the next available meeting, okay? And I don't believe, Tabitha, correct me if I'm wrong, village council doesn't approve special land use, it's just the planning commission, right?
The commission will recommend the council.
Okay.
I know.
So, the next meeting, the next planning commission meeting is the fourth Thursday in June, so that is after June 11th.
Can we have a special meeting? Is there enough time?
We gotta get that.
Well, you have to notice it, so there has to be at least 15 days, and then there's a period of time before the 15-day window begins that the newspaper needs it. So, I don't know if there's enough time to notice a public hearing before June 11th.
I guess my question...
Just so you know, so, the city, village council will hopefully approve the ordinance on June 11th, the planning commission would then meet the fourth Thursday in June, they could hold a public hearing, and then they could decide at that same meeting.
But then it also has to go back to council for final approval?
And then it does have to go back to council, yes.
So, that is, I'm just wondering, is this new information in that the process has changed? Or is this?
I believe that, I believe in this step was that we didn't realize a public hearing was required on your request.
Oh, okay. If I were to do this again in the future, who do I talk to to make sure I get that information, so that I don't make this error in the future? Because everyone I talked to was sure...
And it was the right person, it just, we're such a small village, it doesn't come up a lot, so, until we get further in the process, I guess we didn't ask the right question to understand that a public hearing was required.
Okay.
So, but, so if we back up, if we back up the dates, the township, or the village board meeting is on the 11th, and today's the...
22nd.
22nd. So, that gives us 2019 days, right, calendar days?
Except I missed the deadline today, put it in paper, so no...
So, what, so that was my question?
It won't be next week's paper, it won't be until the following week, which is only the start of the year, excuse me, about the 3rd of June, that's my list, is the only deadline I can make for the paper to notify about a public hearing. And I have to notify that, and have 15 days until the...
Last time we were able to do an alternative?
I was thinking...
Not just the newspaper, we did like an electronic something?
No, always has to be in the...
It's gotta be in...
It just timed out last time.
Right after the 11th, right?
But for the intent, for getting it in, for...
No, I can get a public hearing on this done.
So, it just worked out.
And have the planning commission meet before June 11th, and then, so, yeah, and so it'd have to be the 12th. Actually, I think you did bring up a good point, the ordinance doesn't become effective until seven days after village council approves it. So, that's, that would be June 18th, nope, yeah, June 18th. So, even if the planning commission were to meet, if, say, we could get the notice done in time for June 18th, that's only eight days before the regular meeting. So, I don't know if eight days makes all that much difference. I mean, it wouldn't, this public hearing is not going to affect council, council is only going to meet, they meet the second Wednesday of the month, so their meeting is July 9th. So, they're really the ones who would need a special meeting to bring this forward at all.
So, I guess, why is July 9th not, if we pushed it back to July 9th, why, why can't that one work?
Okay, let's do it. It could.
Okay.
But that means we're just doing everything on regular meetings, do the ordinance on the 11th, planning would meet on the 26th of June to have a public hearing and make their approval, that's their choice, and then it would go to respond to my 9th, and then approve it to my 9th, and it's approved.
Why was this application due April 9th, if the earliest it could be voted on was...
Because we had to give the consultant time to write that letter, and give the direction to the planning, but then he has to accept it, your application is per review, and decide if they wanna set up a public hearing because of the paper, trying to move forward.
Okay. Not gonna lie, I've got two masters, I've sat through two dissertations, you guys are more work. Okay, so I can't do anything about the calendar?
I wish I could.
100% outside of my control.
Well, you were welcome to ask all those questions and figure out how the process worked, and the best way we could move forward.
And I think I have to apply for a special land use permit every year in the future, so...
No, you don't.
No, okay.
In fact, if you move out of this facility next year, someone else could move in. Special land uses run with the land, and this is the only time a childcare center would have to get a special land use for that facility.
Okay, okay.
So, no dissertation next year?
My question came up because there was a statement about my, this is like our number 11 or something, it was just about my certification of my, now I can't even think of words.
Your licensure.
My licensure, and when they expired, that was my question. Okay, okay, thank you. Let me answer those questions.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so, I believe we're ready for a motion to...
I, I, I've got a struggle. Yeah, but that's, the only question I have is the play area, I've got, everything else is straightforward, I've got no, no questions on it, but the fencing, I understand it's got a tinsel strength of 600 pounds, but the, in the example picture, it's got a really flimsy post that, the fence might be fine if the posts are substantial, but I'm just worried, to me, something you could stomp that down without a lot of effort, and just fold the fence down, not worry about somebody breaking through the fence.
It is an AI-generated image, I'll say that, so it's not a perfect...
I saw that.
Yeah, and the only reason that the fence gets that 600-pound limit is through the placement of these distinct posts that go through the fence. It's, they're sold separately, but it's part of the system, and when they design their thing, it goes there. I mean, I will say that the long-term plan is to come up with a alternative fencing that both meets my needs and the church's needs. The conversation we had in the past was things like the horizontal split rails, because they thought those were the most aesthetically pleasing. I don't know anybody under the age of 20 with or without autism that can walk up to one of those and not try to walk, stand on the bottom, or sit on it, or things like that. So, the part of this process, choosing these temporary fences, was to find, give the due diligence necessary to finding the most appropriate fencing options, and going through a permanent post option. So, if this is the fencing we like, coming up with those permanent posts. I didn't know what the approval process needed to be, if it was just a fence versus a post, so again, that's what we're...
I think what we're, I think you want the same thing, it's, it's child safety, right? I mean, if it's a part of a school slash daycare, where you're gonna have children running around in an open area, I think we all think that's, that's great, but it's also on a 40-mile-an-hour road, and we don't want kids to be able to get out that, and so that, that was my question, is, without having seen this, this exact, I've seen the mesh material, but I've never seen it on such a tiny post that is, apparently can be lifted out of the ground if it's temporary.
It is...
Maybe not lifted out by a child, but...
No, it's sunk nine inches deep, and it's an inch and a half to two inches wide, so it's, it's a sizable metal post. I have not installed this fence before, so I don't have personal experience with this. I do have experience with children in the fenced-in areas, and the flexible fencing is something that I would really wanna find a way to make that happen, just due to the ability to like vault on things, be able to pull on it. The flexible things, you can't pull yourself up. And I understand the concern with the posts.
Okay, I just, you know, make me feel comfortable, I think you can't, like you said, I can pull it, that if it's, it's only this far from the ground, that they can't just pull it out and escape, that's my concern.
Would it be possible for you to, in between now and the public hearing, to investigate a more permanent solution?
Absolutely. One of my concerns is that if I need a fencing permit in order to install things, that takes another 30 days, and this process was started in August, so is there any way I can not be delayed another 30 days due to a fence?
Well, Tabitha, do fence permits take 30 days?
They, review of fence permits can take 30 days.
Can they? Okay.
But the church can always apply to put up a fence.
Anytime.
Because property is there, and it's church, and if you wanna fence in that area in anticipation of its use, there's no reason that you...
So, if you have until July 9th, and it's May 22nd, you know, that's a, that's a possibility to help you not delay.
So, site plan approval doesn't trump the...
No, they still need the permit. Knew what you were gonna ask.
As a condition for approval?
Yes, you certainly could recommend approval with the condition that a permanent fence be installed, and then...
Within a timeframe, so we could make a conditional approval of using the temporary, but saying you get so long to have some kind of a permit?
Yeah, we could do that.
180 days or a year or something?
I would recommend less time.
180 days just comes from like temporary, as a Michigan building code.
But this is a security issue?
No.
Safety issue, so, anyway, but it's your decision.
So, if we, so we assume everything goes through, we approve this, we give you a site plan approval using a temporary, but there's gotta be a more secure, safe, how many days would you, you choose the date and see if it works? 90 days? And it would be 90 days from July 9th?
So, it'd be 90 days to apply for a permit, or 90 days to install?
90 days to, I think, to install. Would 90 days work?
So, it'd be October.
My expertise is in children and addressing behavioral needs. I spent the last week researching eight-foot trees, so I'm doing my best to keep up with the billing, the building questions you guys are asking. I think it is doable. Have I done it before? No. I do wanna point out that the setup for this medically necessary treatment is different than childcare. Every child will have an adult within five feet at all times. The fence provides us 10 seconds in any situation, to prevent, if a child is determined to go for an adventure, it doesn't matter how high or what material it is, they will make it. The 10, the fence buys us 10 seconds in order to support the rest of the children and put a safety team on that client. So, yes.
You'd have to get a permit for any fence, right?
Not a temporary.
Not the temporary, okay. Like I say, just put deeper poles.
And I'm good with that.
Everybody else is happy.
I could do a deeper pole...
Cement them in, and we're good. The fencing stuff is fine.
Sally, I wanted to ask you a question, is, is this gonna be what the site plan is based on, this wording?
Uh...
I'm looking at this fencing framing options, or flexible fencing options, is that the wording that would be in the site plan?
Well, uh...
Or could be?
This is what the applicant's proposing, so all of this material would be attached to...
My point being is that it says a fence that can hold up to 600 pounds.
Well, talk to George, he just had his own comments about that.
I think that, I think that if, if you, if this fence goes up and it doesn't hold 600 pounds, they didn't meet the site plan.
I think this is 600 pounds this way?
Yeah.
As opposed to pulling the post, which is only nine inches in the ground, that's like...
You got a one-inch post, that's nine inches in the ground, that's the only, how do you...
Question is...
Tinsel strength is different than force, right? Like, it takes 600 pounds to break that fence, but it doesn't take 600 pounds to push it over.
Correct.
So, what if she thinks...
600 pounds of force without providing a vaulting point to climb over the fence?
Well, I, the option of countersinking a deeper, so going two feet down opposed to nine inches, is that, is that in a workable solution?
I think, I'm not saying this isn't, by the way, I'm kinda supporting this, saying that if it says this, then it has to do this, and I don't see why you would be worried about it, maybe I'm not understanding like you are, which is fine. But the other thing would be, let them get this fence in because it's adequate, and then when they need a new fence, just put in a permit, and it takes 30 days, and then you're gonna need that anyway to get a new fence.
I think we're saying the same thing.
But, I mean, we don't have to put in the new fence into the wording of the site plan.
Oh.
They can just apply for it.
Yeah, but if we don't put it in, they don't ever have to apply for it. They don't ever have to put a permit.
Yeah, but they have to get it in by the number of days that we say, whereas, I don't know, I, I don't, you know what I'm saying there? I'm saying you have the option of getting it approved now and having to do it right away, or waiting because it might take you...
Oh, we're not saying right away.
180 days.
120 days, 180 days, whatever it might be, but I think maybe a good compromise is, yes, going deeper, you know, 18 inches maybe?
Mm-hmm.
And I know it's a one by, you said a one-inch, one-inch wide?
I spent all my time on the fencing, I didn't spend any time on the posts.
Okay, maybe we find a slightly thicker post, so that it doesn't bend, right? Or I, I would be okay, again, my concern is that it doesn't take much to pull nine inches out of the ground.
No, it doesn't, especially at this level.
And so, if you went just 18 inches as for the temporary, but I think the plan is you want some kind of a permanent fence.
In the next year, the goal is to put a permanent fence in, yes. This was the goal, to get it, to get me through approval so I could open this summer.
This is just an example picture, this isn't the exact thing.
This is AI-generated.
And if they say it'll hold 600 pounds, that's probably not even what they're talking about.
Right, no, but they're talking the tinsel strength, it takes 600 pounds of force to break that fence, but not necessarily to knock it over. But not, yes. Especially the materials.
To vault off it, if you bend it over, you can vault it, but to me, I don't know, I, I guess, I guess I'm not understanding.
Also, Laura said that there was gonna be a person within five feet of each person, it's not one recessed person watching 30 kids all running around crazy, there's, they're right there anyway, so, you know, I agree that sinking it a little further, like what George is saying, might be reasonable.
Yeah, I like doing the two foot, and then, if your plan is to put a fence in in a year, like, if that's your ultimate plan, like, I know, I know you're not a big fan of like doing it that far out, but we could put it in there like within a year, you apply for a permit to do a more permanent fence.
I, that was my plan anyway, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with that option, if we can make that happen.
Especially since there's gonna be an adult next to all of these clients or children within five feet.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair compromise.
Agreed.
So, what's the business we need to get done? We need to approve a, a thing for next week?
We need a next month.
We need to schedule a public hearing for next meeting.
And that's it, we don't have to do anything to the council?
We should have them, do we need to rewrite up about sinking the fence post in 18 inches?
Well, not for, not for your decision tonight, we can do that at the, after the public hearing, but let me tell you this, I did look after, you know, we went through that whole, mergers and rolls about village council approval, I looked at the special land use procedures, and you have the final decision, so it does not, you can have the public hearing at your next regular meeting, and you can make the final decision, does not go to village council.
Excellent, that's good. Nice job, Sally.
Okay, so that would be June 26th, then?
Yeah, June 26th.
Public hearing.
Thank you, Sally, excellent job.
Well, I... Thank you to all the people who were involved in that conversation.
So, then, so we need a motion? Motion for a public hearing about special land use?
Can I ask a question about it, though?
Yes.
I'm petrified to ask this question, because now I'm afraid I'm gonna open up a can of worms.
Uh-oh.
The tree, I would like to put in a tree, I'd like to put in whatever tree is necessary to make this happen. As a public person, the most option, the most common option I can find is a six-and-a-half foot tree that grows three to five feet a year. If it needs to be an eight-foot tree, I have to go through a landscaping company. Can I put in a six-and-a-half foot tree, and in a year, it will be at least eight foot, or does it need to be eight foot, and I need to work with my landscapers?
Another...
Because it, the wording in the response back was recommended?
I think that's our choice.
And I got thrown off in a mess.
I personally don't think 18 inches on a tree makes a difference, 18 inches on a fence pole doesn't make a difference?
Well, and the difference between that is that I can get one of the, I'm not a tree expert, one of the bat pine trees, then, at six feet, if I have to go to the eight feet, you get the arborvitae's, which are like the protect, like the, those ones, so to put a single arborvitae in the line of trees kinda looks funky, but I will make it happen.
I, I wouldn't think we'd want an arborvitae, I think the intent was to screen the residents from...
So, in a year, it will be at least eight feet, we can do it, okay, okay, thank you.
I don't think we shouldn't have taken on that too much. No, I think that's our, I, I don't think there's anything in the...
There is, there's, there's minimum height standards for evergreens, so I was just trying to find that, but we can talk about that after the public hearing.
Okay. All right, so motion for a public hearing.
All second. Motion by Thorne, second by Lindman, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
So, Sally, just so as we go, we have the ability to deviate from the eight-foot?
Nope, nope, this is not a PUD, this is a special land use, so you have to meet all the ordinance requirements, but, you know, if the ordinance, I don't know that your ordinance requires an eight-foot-tall evergreen, so it most likely requires a six-foot-tall evergreen, so, but I'll look, and we will confirm that next month.
So, the confirmation wouldn't come until next month? Only because if I gotta plant a tree and make a fence, I don't know how it works.
If you plant it now, it might grow.
Yeah, maybe eighteen foot by then.
Don't put it on a big mountain, eighteen inch mountain.
There was conversations about cutting down a Christmas tree and sticking that in.
Thanks for all your hard work, Laura, and hopefully the information Sally found will help, you know, get your situation going, because it's, you do...
That's a one week delay opposed to a six week, I will take that.
There you go, awesome. Okay, that brings us to liaison reports, council.
All right, so, my first name is Dave, we actually had a new apartment replacement, Donald Strick, he'll be serviced through the end of 2026. Road paving, there are some, a couple issues from the paving that was done last year, a couple cracks and all that, hutch is coming back out, they are fixing it, they are taking care of it, so, they identified it, village engineer, administration's gonna take care of it, so they're fixing what needs to be fixed. Pavement striping, I'm gonna solid new lines out on the parking lot and around the village and all that stuff, I know they're in process, I don't know if they finished everything yet, but driving around town, it looks like they got most of it done. There was, it's definitely worth a watch if you can, is the, there's a young man named Carmine Marshall who came up, he's an Eagles guy, he had an idea about putting in a community garden on a property off of Dunree, there's a vacant village, a couple raised garden beds, really simple, all that, something that everyone else can use, we did approve that, but he is actually getting, with the, with the amendment of getting permission from the next-door neighbors, because obviously if it does become successful, it's gonna have more traffic and attention, so with that, that's a community project that he's heading up. Of course, we had a first reading of special land use ordinance, which approved, and then we wrap it up, please. Yep, comments from the public, very successful night. Comments from the public, a pretty successful night.
Okay, thank you very much. Great report. That brings us to Parks and Recs, Mr. Lindman.
Yeah, we just finalized our survey that's gonna go out next week. It's building up for our master plan. So we put out a pretty detailed survey of what people like and don't like, and would like to see change in their parks and recreation areas. So we use that as our input for our master plan. So that's finalized and getting ready to go out next week. The other thing, we did our annual walkthrough of the park, and Dave Gillum came with us. We walked extensively through the park, looked at everything, took extensive notes on anything that we would recommend DPW work on, and a pretty good to-do list for them on things. Other than that, we're gearing up for our 5K that's this Saturday, and dog show shortly after that, and then Tuesdays on the park. And we already started planning meetings and arranging things for the corn roast.
Yeah, and the farmer's market.
The farmer's market, we've got quite a few applicants there.
What's going on with the Tuesdays in the park? They're also having the farmer's market?
The farmer's markets are going to be Tuesday evenings. Tuesdays in the parks are only one, once a month.
Oh, but the farmer's are-
Farmer's market is every week. So for one, one week a month, the Tuesdays in the park will coincide with the farmer's market, and we did that by design.
Yeah, to bring in more people.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Got a captive audience there, so, yeah. So we've been busy.
Yeah, all right, excellent report. Thank you, Brian, and ZBA, Mr. Buzowski.
Yeah, we, we had our first successful meeting just two days ago since October. We had a quorum, so that was great. We had two cases that day. First one was a new business case for 925 Lucille, and it was essentially an appeal for the bulk building limitations, and also for the detached accessory buildings allowed on a lot. The individual there had put an extension on his garage, essentially, and was seeking a variance to continue to allow that. So ultimately, that was approved, subject to the structure not being finished, if you will, no electricity plumbing or insulation or screening. That's what the board kinda came up with, and also to obtain a building permit and approval.
Yeah.
The other one was a tabled item that we were finally able to hear, but after discussion and admission from the applicant, it seems that he may, may have had an error. This was at 327 Glengarry, just down the street, here, a couple doors down. But he had noted that he believed there was an error in his original site plan that he submitted, and if that was true, he wouldn't need an appeal to allow his front porch that he was requesting to have. And so essentially, we all just agreed to table it for further verification on the matter, and hopefully it does mean, hopefully he doesn't need to come back, but if he does, then well, if you're the case. And then the other matter we dealt with was to remove one member from the board due to absence, and we also voted in a new member, so.
Okay.
Some ZBA business matters, but, yeah. That was the meeting.
All right. Excellent thorough report. Thank you very much for your time on that, and that brings us to any announcements.
I might just say one, the Commerce Township bicentennial is June 14th. It's gonna be a big street party up in the village. Close off the street, and have an all-day, buyers will be open, there'll be a bands, there'll be-
Day of the week is that?
It's a Saturday.
What street?
Commerce between Carroll Lake and Slate Road.
Okay.
Right there. So it's gonna, they'll, actually, Brandon, I, I think that Dave Gillum has offered up your cornhole boards. It's gonna be a tournament, a cornhole tournament. So you'll get props for that.
Oh, wonderful.
So they'll have golf simulators, things for kids, meet, you know, I think it's, I think it's Detroit Power Play will be the band that'll be kinda headlining in the evening, beer tent, food trucks.
That's my old bass player.
Sounds fun.
Yeah, very cool.
They're good. So you said they're closing out the street?
Yeah. And so they'll be parking, parking at the library, parking at Dodge Park, parking at Central, and they'll have shuttle buses that are running people back and forth to their cars.
It's big. Okay, thank you, George. Okay, I guess we hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Thorne, second by James Clark. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thanks for your time, everybody. Appreciate you.